Special session of the St. Mary Parish School Board for Thursday, October 28, 2021 is now called to order. Uh, Dr. Bagwell, would you please call roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Fulkar?
Here.
Mr. Alfred?
Here.
Mrs. Rapp?
Present.
Mrs. Griffin?
Here.
Ms. LaSalle? Mr. Deloitte? Mrs. Black?
Here.
Mr. Barbier?
Here.
Mr. Verrett?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
And we have a four.
Thank you, Dr. Bagwell. Um, it's not only agenda, but I'd like everyone that's able to please stand and say a pledge. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Florida's stand. One nation under God, indivisible, omnipotent in all aspects of the world.
Thank you. Okay, before we go any further, I'd like to recognize that our parish president, David Hannig, is with us tonight. Mr. Hannig, thank you for attending. Okay, and the next item on the agenda is approval of the amended agenda, which adds item three, opt-out provision for the mask. And number four is the disciplinary appeal. Mr. Taylor makes the motion that we approve the amended agenda. Okay, Ms. Griffin seconds. Any discussion? All four say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. On the business affair, item one, approve the declaration of vacancy in position of school board member, District Two, St. Mary Parish School Board, and proclamation calling special election to fill such vacancy. And I'd like to take this opportunity to read that proclamation, declaration of vacancy in position of school board member, District Two, St. Mary Parish School Board, and proclamation calling special election to fill such vacancy. Whereas due to the passing of Sylvia Lockett on October the eighth, 2021, a vacancy now exists in the office of school board member, District Two, St. Mary Parish School Board. And whereas Louisiana revised statute eighteen colon six oh two requires that the St. Mary Parish School Board formally declare the vacancy in its membership and appoint an individual to fill the vacancy until a special election can be conducted in accordance with the requirements of law. Now therefore being duly resolved that the St. Mary Parish School Board does hereby order and direct as follows. Section one, the school board hereby declares that due to the passing of Sylvia Lockett, the office of school board member, District Two, St. Mary Parish School Board, is vacant. Section two, a special election shall be held for the purpose of electing a qualified individual to fill the vacancy in the office of school board member, District Two, St. Mary Parish School Board. Section three, any qualified person desired to become a candidate for the office shall file a notice of candidacy accompanied by a qualifying fee or a nominating petition as required or authorized by law with the appropriate election official in the manner and form and under the procedures and conditions set forth in the Louisiana Election Code during the period commencing Wednesday, January twenty-six, 2022, and ending at four thirty PM on Friday, January twenty-eighth, 2022. Section four, the special election shall be held and conducted under applicable provisions of the Louisiana Election Code. Section five, the primary election shall be held Saturday, March twenty-six, 2022, and the general election, if necessary, shall be held Saturday, April thirtieth, 2022, at the times and places and in the manner prescribed by law. Section six, the Secretary of State, Commissioner of Elections, Parish Board of Election Supervisors, Clerk of Court, Registrar of Voters, and all other persons charged with any power, function, right, duty, or responsibility in conducting elections in the jurisdiction of the vacant position described herein are hereby authorized, requested, directed, and empowered to exercise every lawful function and to do every act necessary to conduct a special election, to cause the returns to be made, to canvass and promulgate the results, and to perform all related and incidental functions. Section seven, Superintendent Teresa T. Bagwell or her designate will take all action necessary to immediately publish the proclamation in the school board's official journal. Section eight, Superintendent Teresa T. Bagwell or her designate will send a copy of this proclamation to the Clerk of Court for the Sixteenth Judicial District and to the Secretary of State by registered or certified mail no later than twenty-four hours after this proclamation is issued. Resolved by the St. Mary Parish School Board at a special session, board meeting on the twenty-eighth date of October, 2021. What's the wishes of the board?
I move that we pass this declaration of vacancy.
Okay, there's been a motion from Mr. Taylor to pass the declaration of vacancy. Did Mr. Fulkard like to second? Any further discussion? All four say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item two, appoint a representative to temporarily fill the seat of District Two School Board Member until the special election. Do we have any nominations? Ms. Rapp?
Um, Mr. Chairperson, I move, uh, to appoint Tammy Moore. Eleven fifty-seven, Big Four Corners Road, Generec, Louisiana is her address as a representative to temporarily fill the seat of District Two School Board Member until the special election.
Thank you, Ms. Rapp. Do we have a second? Mr. Fulkard seconds that motion that we appoint Tammy Moore for the District Two position. Any discussion? All four say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And we will have her sworn in at the, uh, regular meeting in November, November the eleventh, I believe. And she'll take her, uh, chair. Okay, thank you, Ms. Rapp and Mr. Fulkard, and thank y'all for y'all, uh, help in, uh, in securing a good nomination from that area. Appreciate it. Okay, item three, discuss and take appropriate action regarding opt-out mask provision for K through twelve schools. Um, Dr. Bagwell, but I do have, before you take the floor, I have some, uh, citizens that would like to address the board. Okay, so I'm gonna call the citizens up. Uh, we have, uh, I think our policy says that you have three minutes to address the board. I may not hold you to that three minutes, but keep that in mind as you're making your address to the board. It would appreciate it. Our first, uh, person would be Lindsey Anslem, parent. Ms. Anslem, you have the floor.
Good afternoon, guys. My name's Lindsey Anslem. I'd just like to address y'all.
Can you pull that mic down a little bit?
Possibly. I'm two foot tall, sorry. Um, I just want to thank y'all for doing this today. I know this was not on your original agenda and apologize for the loss of your school board member. Um, I know it's hard and I know what y'all do, um, takes a lot of effort. Um, I am here to speak out against the mask mandates and speak for the option of this. First, I want to go off personally saying it has affected my son. My son since three years old has had a hearing problem and he has a speech impediment. At that point, I put him with a speech pathologist and at that point, he learned how to speak and how to speak properly by watching his teachers' mouths and feeling his mouth to understand what was happening. He's been doing very well. He's progressed well. Once we moved to St. Mary Parish, he did go within the system and is getting help with that here, and it's been wonderful. Since masks have been put into place, he has been regressing. Um, he can't watch any of his teachers speak. He can't watch their mouths. He can't purse his mouth personally the proper way because of the mask. He has more anxiety in this situation. He's stuttering more. He's starting to look down. And it's, it's frankly, it, it affects me. It affects my children and it affects other children in this parish in that situation. As far as St. Mary Parish COVID cases, as far as that going up to October twenty-sixth, since the beginning of COVID, we have had eighty-five, eight thousand five hundred and thirty-five positive cases. We have had two hundred and twenty-one deaths in St. Mary Parish. We have a population of forty-eight thousand three hundred and sixty-two. If you take the deaths of eight thousand five hundred and thirty-five divided by the forty-eight thousand three hundred and sixty-two, and then you times that amount times a hundred, it's seventeen point six percent positive COVID rates in this area throughout the whole entire pandemic. If you take two hundred and twenty-one deaths and divide it by forty-eight thousand three hundred and sixty-two, and you take that amount and you times it times a hundred to get a percentage, we have had zero point four five percent deaths in this area. Children are less likely to have a deadly effect to COVID. So I ask you, why at zero point four five six percent death rates for adults are our children still masked? And at this point, we can't get the child rate of deaths in this area or even COVID positive rates. If you guys could provide that for me from St. Mary Parish, I would greatly appreciate it. I can total that out for you guys. That is the rate according to here. As far as from a University of British Columbia and the CDC website, the COVID-19 virus particle is zero point one two five microns. An N-ninety-five mask filter is zero point three micron, and that's on an N-ninety-five mask, not a cloth mask. So an N-ninety-five mask blocks few, if any, particles, much less a mask that looks like this or a paper mask. It's pretty much rendered unnecessary. In other words, if you look at a virus or if you compare it to something, it would be like taking a golf ball and throwing it to, throwing it through a gated fence. You could still get through it. At the same time, I also would like to take a look at the data in Florida as per the Department of Health and Education. There's no statistical differences between the counties with masks in schools and the counties without. COVID-19 cases for ages five through seventeen have decreased seventy-nine percent. In the schools that do not have to wear a mask as of September in fifty-four counties in Florida, COVID-19 cases for ages five through seventeen in the thirteen districts that chose to wear masks, the percentage that it has gone down is seventy-seven percent. There's actually a two percent difference. That's it. A two percent difference, and it actually is in favor of children not wearing masks. That's how little, that's how much their COVID rates have gone down and how much the masks have not affected it either way. A two percent difference to me does not justify the difference for or against wearing masks. I strongly urge you guys to please consider taking masks off of our children. It is harming them socially, emotionally, and productively. And in the age groups of elementary school, it is stunning their emotional growth and when they are trying to connect and find out who they are as people. When you mask them, they lose their identity as they're trying to form it. So thank you so much. Um, if y'all have any questions?
Okay, does any of the board members have any questions for Ms. Anslem? There being none? Thank you. You have one? Okay, Ms. LaSalle?
I don't have a question. I just have a comment. Uh, I fully, fully support you being able to give your opinion, but what you gave was wasn't your opinion. It was mostly statistical data that, that is contradicted by what the governor says.
I'm sorry. I don't under, I can't understand you.
Con, what you're saying is contradicted by what the governor says. And I'm, I'm gonna be straight up, I'm not gonna vote in favor of, uh, keeping the mask. I think if the governor says we don't have it, uh, you know, we don't need it, I'm not gonna make that decision to, um, to keep the masks in. But not because of what you said, all that stuff about statistics and stuff?
Statistics.
And wait but one moment, please, ma'am. I think the people who died, the two hundred and some people who died and the family of those people were not appreciating and, um, reduced to a point zero 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 deaths. All, every death counts.
Absolutely. I totally respect that and I'm not.
That's not what you said, ma'am. That is not what you said.
That is abs, I gave a percentage rate and they were statistical evidence. That doesn't mean I don't respect it. Actually, my own father-in-law passed away from COVID. And no way will I ever disrespect that. But if we're gonna come at this from a medical perspective or evidence, we're gonna follow what that is and whatever that is, it, it should be taken into account. Children are not as likely affected by COVID as adults are, and they can recover. It's simply more like a flu for them.
I agree with, I agree with what you're saying with, with those things, but I just took offense to the, to the.
I'm, I'm very sorry if you took offense to that. That is not my intention. All I simply did was give you statistical evidence, in fact-based evidence, and not anybody's personal feelings that should not be taken into account when we're looking at the evidence of what's happening. I can't, I can't help or change what's happened. What I can do is be safe and fight for my own child's safety, personal growth, and what I feel that I need to do as a parent personally.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Anslem.
Sure.
Good morning.
Okay, thank you, uh, again, for, uh, coming to give your comments. Uh, my question is, um, uh, data that you, that you gave, the data in Florida.
Mm-hmm.
Where, um, specifically, uh, are you quoting this from?
This is the Florida Department of Health and Education.
Okay. Um, Ms. Anslem, again, thank you so much for, uh, for anybody who's given an appearance. I think, uh, you have that right and deserve that. Uh, and I, since you're standing up here, I just want to let you know that I am going to vote against it. And the reason why I'm voting against it is because, uh, because there will be possible that, um, the, uh, the reason for the two hundred and twenty-one, uh, only the two hundred and twenty-one thousand zero point four five percent, uh, and the eight thousand five hundred and thirty-five positive, uh, which was seventeen point six percent, it could very well have been because of, uh, the masks that were in place.
Um, as I described earlier, the effectiveness of an actual N-ninety-five mask being worn was virtually none. So if the actual size of the virus is zero point one two five microns and an N-ninety-five mask, not this, but an N-ninety-five mask is zero point three microns, the size of the actual COVID virus is smaller. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anslem. Okay, uh, the next speaker is, uh, parent Brooke Falgu. Ms. Falgu?
Hi. My name is Brooke Falgu and I'm here to speak for the opt-out of the mask. I have seven children and three grandchildren. My oldest daughter is a teacher in St. Mary Parish. She struggles with students every day. Pull up your mask. Pull your mask down. You're not wearing your mask. It takes away time from that teacher to be able to teach. I'm here today to ask you to please opt out of the mask mandate for our parish. Please make masks optional and not required. I have one with asthma and I have had more E-war visits in the last two years than I've had her whole lifetime of asthma due to the wearing of the mask. They are making our babies wear a mask while exercising and PE. Do y'all wear a mask while exercising? Have you ever tried it? I have the list of ten parishes, surrounding parishes, who have chosen to opt out. Remigent Parish, Acadia Parish, Lafayette Parish, Terrebonne Parish, St. Charles, St. Bernard, Washington, Plaquemines, LaFouche, St. Tammany. I'm sure there are many more, but I've had little time to research. I ask that you follow along. I have gathered a list of one hundred plus parent signatures that could not make it to this meeting today. We are all asking for you to please remove the mask. Thank you.
Ms. Falgu, before you leave, can we have a copy of those, uh, signatures?
Absolutely.
And does any board members have any questions for Ms. Falgu? There being none. Thank you, Ms. Falgu.
Thank you.
Okay, the next, uh, speaker is, uh, our parish president, Mr. David Hannig.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I appreciate you for giving the opportunity to speak on behalf of this. I am here in support of opting out, um, of the mask mandate as to follow suit with the governor. Uh, I am, uh, parish president of St. Mary Parish. I am also a husband of a teacher in St. Mary Parish and I have two children that attend St. Mary Parish schools right now. So I see it from three different presumes. Um, basically as an elected official, parish president, as a husband of a teacher, and as a father of two young boys that are, that go to school in St. Mary Parish. And this is a struggle. Uh, it's been a struggle for all of us. It's been a struggle for the school board and not only this parish, but this state, this country, and this world, dealing with COVID-19. When it first started and the, and the governor issued the first, um, mask mandate, I followed suit and I issued the same mask mandate for St. Mary Parish. After we, the, the first one was, was taken down, it was, the second one was imposed, I did not follow suit. Because at that point in that time, you know, for the first time I understand it, we didn't, weren't aware of what was going on. We were uncertain. It was a scary situation, so absolutely. The second time, as we learned and got more information, I thought, I thought that at that time, it wasn't really necessary. Because I've always been a true believer in personal choice and personal responsibility. Being responsible for yourself and your family. I have nothing against any individual that wants to wear a mask at all. I choose not to unless it's required. I personally have gotten the vaccine. I do not belittle anyone or disparage anyone that chooses not to. That is your personal choice and personal responsibility. I decided to get it myself. I'm asking the school board to consider to please take the opt-out option, follow suit with the surrounding parishes, help our children, help our teachers. It's been a struggle, but we have to get back to normal. Our chi, our kids cannot, you know, it's not being taught. We know this is not normal. We know our kids are at a disadvantage right now being taught with the teachers wearing masks. So I ask you humbly, please, please consider it and please opt out. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Hannig? Thank you, Mr. Hannig, for appearing and thank you for your leadership in our parish government. Um, our last speaker is Jesse Semenow.
Thank y'all for having me. I don't have much to say like the others, but I just want to say I have four kids, three who go to public school, which is burrowing. And, um, all three of them, uh, my oldest, he's in high school. He doesn't seem to really mind. And I'll say that. He's like, Dad, I'm just go with the flow. And I respect that. And I don't tell him he asked to or that he doesn't. Because at this age of fifteen, I believe that he has a choice. Um, my, my second grader and my kindergarten, or my first grader, my second grader Caleb, he, he has a little struggle with, um, I believe he has a little bit ADD there and so he constantly wants to fidget with it. He's always talking about his ears hurt, things like that. He doesn't like to wear it. Um, I sent a letter in, um, trying to opt out for that. Um, this morning, they, they finally told him he had to wear it anyway. So we, we went with it. I'm not, I'm not really trying to make a big fuss, but I'm trying to make a difference and a choice for my family. And, um, here we are through all the COVID. I am COVID-free and never had COVID, to my knowledge. I've never had a vaccine nor have I worn a mask unless I've had to. So that's just me and that was my choice and I got to do that. My wife has had COVID and, um, we lived in the same house. She chooses to not wear a mask. She's okay. I do realize that there's people who are not okay and I've lost close people that I love because of it. And I'm very sorry for the ones who have lost people also. Because I know in this time, it's scary. But the freedom to choose to whether or not I want to wear this mask or not, I believe that we should have. And I believe that my children of all should not be told by other people what they should and should do when it comes to their health. I believe I should be able to make that decision. And if I want them not to wear a mask and I take the chance for that, for them catching it, well then, that's something me and my family are prepared to go through. And that's all I have to say.
Any questions for Mr. Semenow? Thank you, Mrs. Semenow. Okay, now turn it over to Dr. Bagwell.
On Tuesday, Governor Edwards revised the state's mandatory face covering requirement stating that an LEA, local educational agency, could affirmatively opt out of the continuation of the mandate only if the LEA also adopts an isolation and quarantine policy consistent with the Louisiana Department of Health protocols. In conferring with the district's nurse facilitator, our principals, and school staff who overwhelmingly favor such an action, I'm recommending that the board accept the opt-out provision. I do need to point out that the mandate of face coverings will continue on school buses until such time as the federal government lifts its requirement for public transportation. St. Mary Parish Schools has consistently utilized a protocol for responding to COVID that strictly aligns to the Office of Public Health regarding contact tracing and managing students and staff in quarantine or isolation. Therefore, the opt-out provision would not present any undue burden on the contact tracing and our response process. Accordingly, I ask that the board approve a motion to opt out of the face covering mandate for St. Mary Parish Schools and agree to continue to employ state health guidelines in responding to COVID-19.
Ms. Griffin?
I'd like to make a motion that we opt out of the mask mandate and follow the state guidelines for quarantine as required.
Okay, we have a motion. Mr. Barbier makes that second. Any discussion?
I do. Can I say something real quick? I, I work in several schools in one of the districts that Ms. Falgu named and we have opted out of it as well. And just in going into the schools yesterday, it was just a beautiful sight to see everybody smiles. The morale was, was very upbeat. The teachers were happy. It was good to see some normalcy back in our schools and it was good to see smiles. And so, um, thank everybody who came to share, but it, it is, it's time for some normalcy and it's time. And there were some students who had opted to wear the mask. It's optional. And, um, there were several, several students, even, even young students who chose to wear the mask. But it was, it was nice to see some smiles.
Thank you, Ms. Black. Any other comments? All for the motion to approve the opt-out, uh, face covering mandate and the, uh, attached, what is the thing, um?
Quarantining.
Quarantining. That's correct. Uh, all say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank y'all for being here. That brings us to item four. Um, we need to go, uh, to hear an appeal on a disciplinary, uh, criteria. Do we have a motion to go into executive session? Mr. Taylor makes that motion. We have a second?
Mister?
Mr. Barbier seconds that motion. Any discussion? All four say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.